Forgot to wear my little spiel with the tree lighting festival. That's all right.
I'll win.
Yeah. I left it upstairs for tree lighting.
We got no plans, so go ahead, Donald.
Tree lighting festival, okay.
You guys, you guys.
Okay. I'd like to call it an order, uh, meeting of the Summers Board of Selectmen. Today is, uh, Thursday, December 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, Warren Town Hall Auditorium. This meeting will be streamed live. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for roll call on this evening, we have Sleckman Meyer on my right, Schmiede Schmid on my left, Brian Wissinger, our CFO, Tim O'Flor, who'll be back here in a minute, our Director of Ops, Todd Rowland, Director of Public Works and Land Use, Jen Roy, Deputy Director or Assistant Director?
Assistant.
Assistant Director.
Hey, officer.
Very much. Joanne Nickthing, Director of Library, and, uh, that's it. Quite a crowd out there.
Yeah. Don't have to introduce the mice.
So that's the roll call. Public comment, we have none this evening. Presentation by First Selectman. I'd just like to mention the fact that we're excited to report that we have the annual Holiday Tree Festival and Lighting, uh, this, uh, Holiday Festival and Tree Lighting this Saturday at, it's December 6th between 4:00 and 7:00 PM. It's gonna be a little chilly out there, but, uh, dress accordingly.
Yep, definitely.
We got hot cocoa, so nothing. Hot chili, don't worry about it.
Well, my, my, my wife bought me hand warmers today to put in my gloves.
Excellent. I'll take a pair of those. So, uh, Santa arrives at 4:45, uh, on Saturday evening. Tree lighting begins at 5:00 PM. We have musical performances, including Summers High School Honor Choir and Band, the Valley Carolers, and the Girl Scouts. This is a free, uh, family-friendly event, and features photos with Santa, face painting games, a magician juggling, a bonfire with smores, and plenty of food and giveaways. We encourage everyone to attend and enjoy this festive tradition and dress accordingly. Chuck the weather before you leave the house. Thank you. That's all I have for my public comments this evening. Presentation by First Selectman, uh, presentation by First Selectman. A consent agenda, we have, uh, the reappointment, our annual reappointment of members of boards and commissions, so, uh, I think everybody's got in front of them this list.
Yeah, we got the list.
And, uh, these are the people that are currently serving, and we have no one that we know of that's, uh, resigning at this point, is that right?
Sure. Well, that's good.
Can I reach out to everyone?
We've also listed their, uh, political affiliation as well.
Yep, sounds good.
My only question, so I think, um, like here they mentioned co-chair, chair, I mean, every new term, the committee would select that, right? I mean, that's not something we're...
Yeah, that's just something I...
This is existing, uh, existing positions.
I want to make sure people don't think, like, the boards are appointing the chair of the board, because it makes it look like we're appointing them.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
But we're not gonna read the, what, positions?
No, that's a really good point, though. The point he's making, of course, is that we do not make decisions of who the chair and co-chairs are, that's decided by the committee itself.
This is just what they're current...
We're only appointing names.
Right.
That's right, that's it, not positions.
Yeah, because normally the list would just have all the names, so that's fine. Okay, so I make a motion to approve the, appoint the members to the boards and commission, the Advisory Committee for Seniors, Conservation Committee, Cultural Commission, Economic Development, Open Spatian Trails, Recreation, um, the town attorney, uh, WPCA and Youth Services, um, ask, present the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion on the proposed appointments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Next, we have an opportunity to add urgent agenda items.
I think we have one tonight. I think we do have an item from the building committee.
Great.
Send me a motion to add to the agenda, um, the consideration and possible vote on, um, the school HVAC grant.
The current IAQ grant.
Yes.
IAQ grant.
Yep.
Pretty good.
This is for the schools?
Yep, and we'll discuss it when we get to it on the agenda. Right now, we're just adding it.
Okay.
Very good, any, any second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in support say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Uh, finance, transfers appropriations, any of those?
Nope.
CFO's financial report.
So, um, first, the, the audit is 97% complete at this point. Um, we went through all the review and so forth. Um, I spent most of the week reading all 163 pages of it. Um, it's great material.
Any concerns?
Nope, no concerns. Um, they, it's waiting on, um, a couple of things from the, um, Board of Education to fill in some, some blanks, uh, but I think they got that to them today. They are planning to...
It's an audit of the town finances plus the Board of Education.
Yeah, it's all, all dollars, um, all assets of the town. Um, so they will be presenting, um, the financial statements at the next Board of Finance meeting, which is scheduled for December 16th.
Sounds good.
Good.
I sent all of you earlier in the week, the first round of, um, the budget, with everybody's submissions in. Um, we had a pretty successful first-time use with ClearGov. A couple of little hiccups here and there, mostly, um, user hiccups, not, um, not software hiccups. Some of the highlights from the budget, um, the estimated, uh, insurance increase right now from the state of Connecticut, um, is between 10 and 15%. Historically, Tallinn has always been, Tallinn County has always been the low end of what their projection is, um, so I put in for 10% increase in, um, health insurance premiums. Um, it's an average of about $275 plus or minus, um, per employee, per month.
What was that again? Sorry.
About $275.
A month.
A month, per employee.
There's the increase, yeah.
Yeah, that's the value of the increase. Forty-two members, um, from the town of Summers on the health insurance plan. Um, three of those, um, cost centers, or three of those employees get billed to the ambulance fund cost center, um, so in the general fund, we budget for 39 of them. In the calculations, I also assumed a 1.5% increase in the employee cost share, um, from $11, or from 11% to 12.5%. It's, on average, about $60 per month, per employee, um, that they, that they would see an increase, um, of their contribution. The HR position was eliminated in the budget, um, as well as, um, the health officer stipend, since we now have a, um, health director. There you go, that's the word I was looking for, Todd. Um, there is a, um, you'll notice in IT, there's quite a large increase in the, um, technology equipment. We've got about eight or 10 machines that are, by the time the budget kicks in, will be almost four years old at that point, um, so we'll be looking to replace between eight and 10 machines next year, um, where this year, we had only budgeted for about four, um, which is why you see such a large increase. Budget as requested by all directors, it's at a 4.5% increase, um, does not include any proposed, um, COLA, um, increases at this time within the budget.
Any overall figure increase, uh, for the budget as you say?
Four, four and a half percent on the town side.
Yeah, that's what he says at the end, yeah.
Which is pretty close to what I estimated when we were doing the salary survey. I think I said five, so...
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
Well, I always want to guess high and come in low.
Exactly, exactly.
I like it too different, thank you.
Yeah, good, that sounds, uh, very thorough, and I know you've worked on this for a while.
Yep, so I'm putting together, putting together all the binders now. Um, I'll have those ready for you in two weeks, um, and we've got, all the directors have scheduled their dates, so I'm putting the calendar together, um, and that'll be in your binders, um, and starting in January, we'll have our weekly budget meetings. Our wonderful Public Works Director was the, he was chomping at the, he wanted to be the first one in, so...
Get it over with. I agree with that.
All right.
So, we'll get the budgets, uh, binders in a couple of weeks?
Yeah, um, you'll probably get yours next week, Tim, but since we don't have another meeting, and if I don't see the other two before then, I'll get them to you at the budgets at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'll be your Christmas, I'll put a bow on it for you.
Can I ask you a silly question? Uh, my payment and my salary, what, when is that coming?
I'd have to ask Danny, I don't know.
I, I'm not trying to...
I think it's the next payroll, so...
Next one?
In two weeks, but I'd have to ask her.
I just want to know, because I use it to pay, pay my town taxes, that's all. I'll just get the check and give you, get it right back.
Kind of a circular payment.
It is, it is, exactly. Well said. I get the check and give it right back.
Sign it over the...
Yeah, just sign it right over.
Any other questions about the budget?
I have to write a check.
Thank you.
Yep, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Brian, very good, appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have a presentation scheduled, payments. Need a motion on that.
Yep, happy to make a motion, uh, to approve the payments in the amount of $350,577.90.
Any further discussion on the motion? I've reviewed this myself, uh, item by item, and didn't have any questions this week.
Oh, wow.
So, uh, it's pretty straightforward.
All right.
All those in support of the motion, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, motion passes. Yeah.
Any updates?
Any updates from boards and commissions? None. Pending business, none, new business, proposed planning and zoning commission members with a four-year term, and proposed alternate members with a one-year term. Effective date is, uh, 1/1/2026.
Does it look good, Jack?
Well, and you got, I, I spoke with Jennifer about this, of course, and all the members, proposed members, whether they're members or alternates, have been contacted, had discussions with them, uh, they're probably happy and pleased with the results. There's no one petitioning to change.
All right, good, so as long as you're happy there.
We got a pretty, we got a pretty strong team here, I believe, and they, as I stated earlier this evening, I think, uh, through their performance in the past, we pretty, have a pretty good idea who we have, what they're capable of, and what we can anticipate in the future, so...
All right, sounds good, thank you, Jen.
What's the meeting schedule gonna be? Are they gonna meet twice a month now, because they're combined?
Um, well, it wasn't defined in the charter revision, so I guess we have to have a special meeting in January for, for them to set a schedule, but they...
Set a schedule. I mean, I'm imagining they have a lot more business in front of them, just because they're combined now.
Um, yes or no, it was the same thing, zoning commission would meet the first Monday of the month, receive an application, refer it to planning, and they'd meet the second Thursday of the month, and, you know, the app would go, so I'm not sure how they do it, if they want to a month, um...
Or need.
Or need, I can...
I guess a member would decide based on the main...
Right, what night they'll do, me and, and whatnot.
We'll let them decide.
Okay, all right.
Everyone on the list, all seven, actually all 10 really, are, uh, current members of zoning or planning, and there's only one person that's not in, um, you know, they were just an alternate, and, and difficult to, to narrow came, so it's, it's everyone who's currently serving, and they show up and...
All right, thank you, very good.
I think we've got a pretty strong team here, and, uh, looking forward to this organization being a little more efficient than having the two of them, and, and easier to get a quorum. Quorum would be just four of the seven.
Four of the seven.
Do we have to approve this list?
Uh, we do.
All right.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, propose the motion to approve the list.
Yeah, I have to make a motion to approve the, uh, planning and zoning commission members with a, with a term of four years, and the alternative members with a term of one.
Do you want me to list and say their names?
No, I don't think we need to, they're listed here, as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in support say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. Director Rowland. Capital improvement request.
Yeah, I can say that.
Come on down.
I do have some questions, so you...
Well, she already filled us in before you got here.
Uh, good evening, uh, the, uh, library would like to install some more cameras to add on to the system that they already have, just couldn't put some cameras outside. Uh, the library board has agreed to pay for the installation of the cameras.
Is there a reason for adding cameras? Yes, I like to hear that.
More security, uh, in the library, we, we had, when the cameras were installed, for some reason, they were never put on the doors, on the outside doors.
Close.
I think they'd pick that one first, skip the ones in the...
You would think so, yeah.
Uh, there's 10 cameras, we've got some in places where I, maybe, I mean, I think they're all useful, but maybe some of them are not as useful. For whatever reason, they didn't put them on those doors, and usually, most libraries would put them on the doors, so, we, we've had some issues where it's come up, where it would have been nice to have cameras, uh, we had, I think there was a woman that I got contacted by the, I think I got a court order or something, I think I got a court order for footage of a woman who was leaving, who then caused an accident and killed somebody. Um, there's also been issues in the parking lot, so these, the camera that we're putting there would also pick up part of the parking lot.
That's good.
Now, we're kind of relying on the schools and hoping the middle school can pick up part of our parking lot, and, uh, and then, one time, even the police have said to me, you gotta get cameras, you need cameras there, so, um, and now, of course, we've also taken on a teen center. We've always had kids after school, now, we've actually, sometimes are now getting up to over 50 kids a day on the school.
Really, it's that many, yeah.
It's gone up substantially now.
So, the bike room didn't have cameras beforehand, but will have cameras now.
The bike room has a camera, and it will continue to have that camera. I want to install, want an additional one in the lobby, because there's a lot of coming and going in there, and I've got one way over on one side, and one on one on the other, so closer to where the teen center is, and where the bathrooms are, that's another potential problem area, we've got vandalism and who knows what. Um, and then we want one on each door, and we've had issues where the side door where the employees enter is also the side of the building where the dumpsters are, we've had illegal dumping, we've had vandalism there. It, it just makes sense that we need these cameras, so, uh, I pitched it to the library board and asked them to consider it and funding it. They said that they would, and so, um, we're gonna run. So, I, I got some estimates from the, uh, we, so we have an existing system with another vendor, you know, so we have to stick with the same vendor, because we're gonna be adding these cameras to what we already have.
Sure.
Running, so...
Is there a problem with putting one in the bathroom, just...
Yes.
We're not putting anything in the bathroom.
That's good, I would not want to put like...
The hallway, where the bathroom doors are, yes. Yeah, to see the hallway, yeah.
We don't want anything in the bathroom.
No, that'd be against the law. You'd get arrested.
There's so much smoke, you can't see anything either.
You don't want to be accused of being a peeping town.
Yeah.
Um, so my question, I think this is great, I fully support it, I'm surprised you don't have these cameras, but the cost, this cost just seems crazy.
It does seem wise.
I mean, I buy a lot of cameras, I don't pay anything like this, and I buy high-end, top-of-the-line cameras, I mean, so either we're getting ripped off really bad by a proprietary system, or I think we gotta shop around.
You're getting ripped off, so I just, literally while you guys were talking, um, I Googled these, um, Axis is the same ones, this one, the ones that we use for all the recordings, so I'm very familiar with Axis, um, the, the three, or the 3086V dome cameras, and you can buy it for $430 apiece, it's 860 bucks. The 3737, um, the closest comp that I can find is a 3735, but same basic thing, it $1,700 plus or minus, so I mean, we're in it for $2,500 in hardware, like $10,000 in installation. Um, I could, I mean, no, we could get, to be honest with you, I mean, Suzer could install those, Suzer installed ours.
There's something sketchy going on, like, I don't think...
And this is after I talked them down, about $1,200 off.
No, they're the worst.
Yeah, no, Sonatrol's ripping you.
They're ripping us off, so don't use that.
You could, you could install all of these without ever needing a capital request, these are, I mean, these are commodities, they're, they're disposable cameras.
I mean, I do a Vigilion cameras, which are higher-end, and I'll, an exterior camera's $3,000, installed with licensing, integrated into the system, everything, and an inside camera's like 1,500, again, they're high-end, they're night vision, they, I mean, this is...
The one that we're recording with was 2,500.
The problem is, how do you add it to an existing system? And I agree with you 100%.
It's all, it's all network.
Suzer would, it could install it, you run an ethernet cable, you plug in ethernet, and you...
But we also have a contract with them where they are monitoring, it ties in with our security system, and we pay...
Well, this is part of the schools, and I think the schools got a bad deal a long time ago, I think they're paying way too much, I think it's, well, I mean, why are we hanging on to a bad contract? I mean, they have a lot of bad contracts over there where they pay too much, and I think it's time to cut.
The way I understand it, this was established in, I think they put this system in the library, put it in 2019, following, following the school department.
Well, yeah, the school went out to bid.
The school did theirs in 2015, I think.
And I'm assuming, I wasn't here then, so...
I know this one, you know.
Yeah, I'm assuming they went with the same company as the schools for...
Right, because it was on campus.
Well, it was on campus, and they, and that's also one that did the filming of the windows through 3M. The system is interlocked with, uh, were supposed to be interlocked with the schools to operate in conjunction when the school goes into lockdown, that hasn't been the case, as I understand it.
They never, they never networked the two, and...
There was problems with doing all that.
There was problems...
That's how it was, so why don't we use the town's plan? What's the platform they use for the video?
We use, uh...
Well, it depends, SpotAI or Vrata, Vrata is another one. We'd have to get away from Sonatrol, we'd have to look at the alarms, too. Why wouldn't we? I mean, they're like key cameras, you just get a new brain, if you need it, and then you just plug them in and run the new, put them on the town. I'll have to do research, I've...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how they tie in, security-wise, because I know, like, the Sonatrol system is all linked through the alarm system, and so if, like, the school gets shut down, it'll shut down library, like...
But it doesn't, it doesn't, that's what everyone thought.
Right, but...
Well, again, back to my earlier statement, I think they made a lot of bad decisions over the years, I don't want to get dragged down, I mean, this is extraordinary, I mean, this is...
I think, I think $4,000 per camera for a $400 camera?
You're getting ripped off.
You're getting, you're getting ripped, um, so, I mean, I'll, I'll buy you the cameras off Amazon, they're for sale, B&amp;H Photo and Amazon sell them, we bought them from B&amp;H Photo when we bought them, um...
So, yeah, I think we move forward with doing these cameras, I think we shop the market, I think we figure this out, and tie it together with the town. The town should have an integrated system, so Town Hall, the firehouse, you know, Kivvy Fuller, the senior center, it should all be on the same...
Our two vendors, well, half are on SpotAI and half are on Vrata.
Yeah.
You should pick one for everything.
I have no problem with, if anybody wants to pull Sonatrol out of there, I'd have a happy go.
Well, then, I guess we'll table this, and I'm gonna do some research and...
All right.
That's instead, we're definitely gonna have to do some research, and this is...
And even if you want after, um, it'd probably be after the first of the year, but I could have, um, you know, like Josh or somebody from Suzer come down and, you know, tell me, could we just buy three cameras, and can you connect them to the...
Well, the other issue with biblimation is the backbone, it's not on our town, we don't inter...
That has nothing to do with it.
They wouldn't care.
It's a long, it's a long series of secrecy with it, we don't, we're not really in the house, you don't have like a local server.
No, no.
All right, well, do some research.
Well, we, this cloud has the problem, so, because it's cloud-hosted, but again, Vrata, if you're doing Vrata...
Also, I mean, SpotAI is...
SpotAI, we have a five-year contract, that was the last one that we did in this building. It's probably a lot to do with...
We did, we did, we did three buildings for less than 20 grand.
Oh, yeah.
Is this just cameras, or is this like...
That was just cameras.
Security alarms, too?
But the security alarms were paying, what is it, Town Hall, like 5,600 for all the buildings for burglar alarms, a year, um, it's a lot less expenses.
Oh, yeah, but what company is that, though? That's a different company.
Total Protection.
So, that's just, is that tied in with your cameras, too?
No.
See, the way...
It doesn't need to be, like, there's no value to that.
It's kind of nice, because actually, a lot of times, I'll get calls from Sonatrol at all times of the day, saying, hey, somebody's in your building, and they shouldn't be, they can tell on the cameras where they are, I can tell where they are. Most of the time, I'm saying, oh, yeah, that's so-and-so, and don't worry about it.
But you still will be able to, you'll just do it on Vrata.
No, we don't have that. With, with these cameras, they don't have live monitor.
I thought you said you have cloud.
We have, yeah, we can...
Anybody with Axis can look at it, but we wouldn't know that somebody was in the building, unless they trucked the alarm.
Right, you're not gonna have...
They're gonna get the alarm, they're gonna call Joanne, say the alarm's going off, she's gonna get on her phone and look at the camera, yeah.
Right.
The nice thing about Sonatrol is they're looking at live, you're paying for that live person 24/7, to be looking at, well, they're looking at millions of... Why wouldn't we have that at Town Hall, then, if it's so valuable?
There's always somebody in here.
This, this building's... Why would, I mean, we don't have it in any other building, we don't have it at the police station.
I agree.
The firehouse, like, I mean... No, I, I agree, I'm just saying, that's, that is one of the things Sonatrol has, is the live monitoring, do we need that? Let's do a better price, let's move forward with it, I think we...
Yeah, and I'll look...
I, I think what we're saying isn't so much, let's get less expensive cameras, we're saying, let's look at the...
No, you can get the same cameras, I can buy you the same cameras right now.
But I'm saying, rather than paying this amount, I'm saying, let's look at the big picture altogether.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I, I would love to get them out.
Yeah, I think we do.
If we could get some kind of alarm system and camera system, I mean, if they work together, fantastic, if they don't, they don't, it costs a lot less money, I mean, for right now, it's your budget, but it, it just drives me nuts, because you're right, we're getting ripped off.
You're paying a crazy...
Oh, I agree, I agree, and that, and I don't like going to the board and saying, hey, well, you guys paid for this, but then, right now, they're saying, oh, that's the cost.
Well, the good news now is you go back and Town Hall, you're saving them, right?
True.
Because of this interaction this evening.
Yeah. Okay, and there's a couple of reasons, there's just, there's proprietary, same with alarm system, same with like, um, control system for HVAC, they just come in and they think they own the place. Well, that's, that's also why we're, it's train.
Right, that's trains.
That's some source.
I wasn't here, I wasn't...
Same thing, it's like the damn elevator, oh, yes.
Yes, you want to get rid of train, that's why we joke, you want to prevent the whole age-related thing.
Well, like, we're doing the elementary school project. We're doing open source stuff.
Yeah.
You know, we're done with this, because this company came in with this crazy bid.
That's what they do.
So we're not doing it. If they don't bid low, they're out, you know?
They see the municipality and they just start, you know, oh, we'll charge them low, and that's what they do.
Yeah, well, not in Summers anymore.
Well, hey.
No, thank you, Joanne.
I'm not bored with it. I'm not bored with it.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
So I'll probably want to just touch and base with you.
Yeah, I have to go back through all the contracts and look at what was on.
So we actually need a motion to approve the.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it tonight. I'll table this, because let's do some research and see what we can come up with.
That's right. Very good, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'll touch base with Todd and.
I'll reach out to Suzer, too, and see as far as installation goes, because if it's, I mean, if we're just doing camera mon, all it's got to do is be plugged into your network.
Yeah, and actually, if we're, we probably have to change out the cameras, but they already, they already have got six to them, so existing stuff shouldn't.
I mean, we own the cameras.
Okay, so maybe we can see if we can.
You might be able to even do it below the capital threshold, like Brian said. You could maybe do one.
Three cameras, if we could do it for three thousand dollars.
And not even need our approval.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're just commodities. I mean, we've already, we've replaced that one once in, you know, five years. We've replaced the two in the other conference rooms.
All right.
I mean, they, they last about five years on average for Axis, and then you replace them. But four hundred dollars, as opposed to four thousand dollars per camera, is, you know, a lot more affordable.
Yeah, okay.
All right, very good.
Thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Director Rowland.
Uh, next request I have is to fill two open on-call seasonal plow operators. Two of our on-call people aren't coming back, so we had, we have two openings. We posted the ads and interviewed several different people. The two candidates that we are requesting to hire, the first one is Danny Marzilli. She just got laid off from ONG. She holds a Class A commercial driver's license. She is an equipment operator. She's actually in an apprentice program with one of the local unions, and part of her apprenticeship is to get municipal experience as a plow operator. She has commercial experience as a plow operator, but not as municipal. She's quite impressive, actually. Next candidate is Lily Tisdale. She is younger. This is a non-CDL route she would be driving. And she just finished up with DEEP in the Forest and Park Division. She was driving there one time, and she likes to tell the story that she had to operate the tractor because none of the guys could.
Wow, that's an interesting.
That's awesome.
Yeah, no, so I think both of them have great attitudes. The foreman like them.
Excellent.
I think they make good hires.
How'd you find them?
Uh, word of mouth and Indeed, and put it on the town website, but Danny came through Indeed and Lily was through Watermouth.
All right, sounds good.
Great. So we need two separate motions on this?
I only just make one.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion or two to hire an on-call seasonal plow operator with Danny Marzilli at the rate of twenty-seven dollars per hour and also to hire Lily Tisdale at an on-call seasonal non-CDL plow operator at the rate of twenty-nine per hour.
Second that.
Very good. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
My next request is to request to formally waive the local building fire and health permit inspections fees for the HVAC project at the elementary school. We historically do that, but because of the scale of this project and the fact that we're going for state grant, we wanted to codify it and ask the board to officially waive it. We will still have to pay the education, state education fee portion, which is twenty-six dollars per thousand of the construction cost.
Twenty-six cents per thousand.
Twenty-six, I'm sorry.
Twenty-six cents per thousand.
Twenty-six cents per thousand, yes.
We got it. All right, sounds good.
Make a motion to waive the local building fire and health permit inspection fees for the elementary school HVAC project.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next we have senior center staffing request.
Why can't he be here?
Yeah, she couldn't be here, so. Already the, already the letter that she presented, which we have.
Very clear.
I'm pleased to recommend Howard Rogers as a part-time senior center bus driver position at Town Summers. Howard is recently retired and interested in working a few hours per week. He brings an impressive tenure of service with the Town of Agawam, where he worked from December nineteen eighty-six until his retirement in October two thousand twenty-three. During this time, he began his career as a laborer with the Department of Public Works. He advanced to deputy superintendent, demonstrating strong work ethic, leadership skills, and a commitment to public service. Howard has a commercial driver's license, CDL, meeting the license requirement, licensing requirements for his role. He knows that he must complete a background check and physical, and he is fully ready to do so. Given the time needed to complete the medical and background requirements, and considering the busy holiday schedule, I'd recommend the start date of January fifth, two thousand twenty-six. This should provide ample time for an onboarding steps, all onboarding steps, to be completed smoothly. I'm confident that Howard can be a great addition to our team. His flexible schedule will be, will support and balance shifts among our current drivers as professionalism, reliability, and professional, and positive attitude will be available, valuable assets to our senior center community. I wholeheartedly recommend Howard for this opportunity. Maureen Parcell, Director of Recreation and Services.
Sounds good. Happy to make a motion to hire, to, to support the request to hire Howard Rogers as a part-time senior center bus driver with a start date of January fifth, two thousand twenty-six.
Uh, two questions. Number one, what's the salary rate?
Twenty-one thirty-six.
Okay, so Bob, do you mind adding that to your motion? Salary at twenty-one thirty-six an hour?
Yeah. I found that out after.
We'll add the salary of twenty-one thirty-six an hour?
Yeah, and then the second thing would be it's contingent upon completion of the medical and background checks.
All right.
I'll second it as long as it's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
So motion as amended. All, any further discussion?
No.
All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Todd.
Right.
Do we have the item yet?
Yeah, we have the additional item.
Frank, I'm probably explaining what's exciting. Yeah, so the current HVAC, HVAC indoor air quality grant that we have from the state of Connecticut, based on timeline and everything, there's, we're never going to meet the guidelines of it. We are in the process of applying for.
It's good because you got to spend it with a certain amount of time.
Right, we have until December thirty-first of twenty-six. The, the grant award letter says twenty twenty-five, which would be in twenty-seven days. But we did get a one-year extension, but we're still, the project's not going to be completed this time next year. We are in the process of applying for a non-priority grant right now. I believe almost all the information, with the exception of the acreage for the school, is completed, and we're just trying to wrap that portion up to submit the application. But to apply for the new grant, we have to formally rescind the acceptance of the HVAC indoor air quality grant. Project number one-two-nine-dash-zero-zero-one HVACN. So is that what we have to vote on, then?
Yes.
Rescinding that? Yes. All right.
So, and the building committee did vote on this?
Yep, the building committee voted on.
Obviously voted to recommend the Board of Selectmen.
Good, good, good. It's good to hear.
So I would make a motion that the Board of Selectmen notify the state that we're formally, is the word rescind?
I think rescinding the acceptance of the grant.
Rescind the acceptance of grant one-two-nine-dash-zero-zero-one HVAC, because the town will not be able to meet the required timeline to complete the project.
Second that?
Yep.
Is that it for the motion?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would authorize the first selectman. I mean, he's going to have to prepare a letter, I think, or.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to prepare something. Yeah, we, we have an email address. I'm not sure who signed this grant acceptance. Might be Dr. Galloway, but I can't really tell. It's.
Okay. Well, we authorize the first.
It's not an eligible signature.
If, if necessary.
Necessary to, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Great.
Sign any documents related to the rescinding, rescinding.
Got all that, Ken?
I do.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Bill. So now we have minutes to consider. Twelve minutes of a November twenty, twenty twenty-five. Regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Happy to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on Thursday, November twenty twenty-five.
Second that.
Any, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good meeting.
Very good. Well done.
Six forty-one.